This is the Spokane City Council briefing session for Thursday, September 2nd. Thank you for your patience. I think we have everyone here who is going to attend. So we do have four council members, oh, five, I see. Hello, everyone, and we do have quite a few things on our agenda today. So we're going to start off with our Gonzaga University Leadership Needs Assessment. And I am looking at all our presenters here, so I'm going to have you self-introduce. Is that you, Rochelle?
It is, thank you.
We have about 30 minutes.
Perfect, I just... Perfect, thank you so much. And I just want to check to make sure that everyone can see my screen. Okay, perfect, thank you. So again, my name is Rochelle Strather, and I work at Gonzaga University in the School of Leadership Studies as the Director of Leadership Training and Development. And I'm really glad to be joined by Carly Courtright, who has been a partner on the project that we're about to present on. Carly, of course, being the Director of the ONS Department. So I'm going to share highlights from what took place over this past spring regarding this particular project. As you can see, we've called it Developing Effective Neighborhood Leaders. This is in partnership with Gonzaga University and the Office of Neighborhood Services. So the background of this project is that in 2018, as Council President Beggs remembers, he and I had a meeting to discuss how we might partner together between the School of Leadership Studies and the City of Spokane to help neighborhood leaders and help other leaders in Spokane become more effective. And Council President Beggs and I had done some work before on different projects, and so it was nice to be able to talk about this. And it took about a couple of years to really move the project forward. But COVID actually presented a really great option or opportunity for us because suddenly everyone was able to use Zoom. It was possible to think about how we could move forward in this virtual space. It actually allowed a lot of access. So we moved forward with this partnership in January, and Council President had proposed several areas of focus for neighborhood councils, committees, and commissions. And that was, one, to help them develop essential leadership skills that many of them might have been lacking, perhaps because of lack of experience or perhaps even lack of interest in developing certain skills. Also, there was this perceived need that people needed more information around city processes and structures, you know, how to work within the city system. And then issues related to diversity and inclusion, noticing that our committees, commissions, and councils were pretty homogeneous and not having a lot of people from underrepresented communities. So with that, we moved forward with the first step being an assessment of where things stood within these various groups. So a needs and a strengths assessment of leadership. And what that looked like was first engaging facilitators. I worked quite a bit with some of our partners to determine who would be an effective facilitator or two facilitators. And very specifically, we wanted to make sure that we had people from underrepresented communities, because obviously that was, you know, really modeling what we were trying to convey as a priority. And so we identified Gretchen Thomas and Christina Kamkosi, who came from partners in different neighborhood or community groups. Then we assembled a team of volunteers that included ONS staff. And so I really want to appreciate Carly because she truly brought in her staff members to be part and parcel of this.
We completely lost her. Carly, do you want to continue until she comes back?
I can continue, yep. Let me pull up her PowerPoint here. Find out where she was here. So yeah, basically, apologies if I share my screen. The effort that we were really working on was engaging in this design thinking methodology. And so with our facilitators, we work with another group. So Gabby Ryan and Annika Eagle from ONS really helped take lead on this project along with Gretchen and Christina to complete interviews, work on focus groups. It was a little bit of, I'll be honest, kind of a heavy lift getting engagement from our partners on this angle. Just because some of them felt like they'd been through this before. And I think it's been in the past, and I think that's one thing that kind of came out of this entire process, if I can jump ahead a little bit, is the frustration with sharing ideas and working on something and then having it be put on a shelf and nothing happening to it, which I think for all of us working in government, we're all pretty familiar with that. And that's sort of, you know, par for the course. I think we all can understand frustration with that as well. And so that was one of my commitments, really, on some of the groups that I was in, is that, you know, for me, this was really important and that I promised it wasn't going to just die on the vine, that we were going to take this and do something with it. So that was one, I think, piece of it. We did get a pretty good response to our surveys, you know. And I do think, again, Rochelle also dove in and completed some of the interviews. So we got a lot of work done. One of the things that we tried to be mindful of, you know, Gabby and Annika did a lot of behind-the-action scenes work, supporting, connecting people. But we really tried to make sure that they weren't doing too many of the interviews simply because we wanted to make sure that they weren't bringing their own bias into the work. Same thing with me doing them, just because as ONS staff members were a little bit, I guess, fair to say, could bring our own mentality to this. And so we looked, we did a lot of work after the fact, but in terms of the actual interviews and group thinking, that was done by other members of the project team. So the design thinking methodology, and I wonder if Rochelle is back yet because she is much better expert on this than I am, it doesn't look like she is. So design thinking methodology really comes looking at it from an empathetic standpoint. So we're trying to collect the feedback from members from their perspective. So really trying to, you know, come at it from that angle rather than, I guess, a traditional sort of interview approach, really trying to listen to them and be empathetic to that. So that's why we conducted the interviews. We also did focus groups. Our team member attended neighborhood meetings and community assembly meetings to be able to make observations, collect some feedback there. We also did a survey to the community to solicit feedback, not only from those individuals who have been active in the neighborhood council system at one point or another, but also those who maybe didn't have any knowledge of it or were involved and left for some other reason. And then we did a review of those existing materials and resources. So we got together as a group, kind of did a deep dive, and really came through what exactly, you know, was that data telling us and where should we go from there. So with that, our first guiding question that we started out with to kind of lead the design thinking process was, how might we support current and emerging leaders in the neighborhood in achieving their goals? So it was really about how do we end up supporting the current ones as well as emerging leaders? And as you'll see, that actually, we ended up changing our guiding question after we got all the data and came up with a different one. So we started this in February of this year and continued through June. We did 29 one-on-one individual interviews. There were two focus groups that we had as well with a larger stakeholder group, collecting some of their data. We had six meeting observations. And then that survey we pushed out, we had 105 survey respondents to that. We also used existing building safer neighborhoods, excuse me, stronger neighborhoods. That's a committee of the community assembly. They've done work on this in the past, so we used their materials to look through it. And then Rochelle had students examining other cities' leadership programs and neighborhood programs to see if we could glean some intel from them as well. So we'll move on to sort of our key findings.
Rochelle.
So what we really found from the current state of the neighborhood councils, and this was based on the feedback from, again, the survey data from the people who participated, that they currently lack diversity, really with many of the, at least the respondents to our survey being white females. And we would, you know, determine them to be retired. They usually identified with an older age group. We saw that a lot in the leadership positions as well. Challenges that were identified within the councils included a lack of clear communication that is between the groups themselves, also to citizens. People weren't aware when the meetings were occurring. They didn't know how to get involved. Lack of results, so, you know, some of the feedback that we received largely from those interviews from people who maybe were involved in the past as well as on the surveys, was a lack of results. They felt that the neighborhood council was a lot of talking and not a lot of actually, you know, being able to achieve the result that they were aiming for. Accessibility was another one. That was really looking at being able to get to the meetings in general. So I think for many of us, and I guess of bringing, like, not bringing your own bias to the process, I think we came into it assuming that the new virtual world was a good thing for many of our people who hadn't been able to attend neighborhood council meetings in the past because of transportation issues or childcare, other things that might have made that a problem for them. On the other side, though, we did receive feedback that virtual also has its limitations. That for people that don't have a good internet system or computer, smartphone, whatever, that it wouldn't be available for them to access. Also, people that, you know, have technology, maybe it's just not a great way to interact, that they need to be, you know, reading lips, that sort of thing. It's easy to do in person if they're hard of hearing. That was a challenge, so with the accessibility. Sustaining engagement from residents was another one that was identified. Depending on, some of those past leaders had identified that, you know, someone might come to a meeting when there's a big project going on that impacts them, that that is something that they get really, really engaged and they have their voice, and then once that issue is resolved, they fade off again. And so they've become less involved and not as engaged. And so how do we keep that going? Succession planning was another one, and this was a big one, we heard a lot, kind of the burnout from the existing leaderships, that they continue to serve in leadership roles because no one else is willing to stand up. Part of that might be, again, that lack of getting people involved. I think some of that is also not developing leaders, not helping, you know, groom someone to come into the place. So a little bit of both of those angles. And then another thing that was identified were incentives or appreciation for service. So a lot of the leaders that did participate shared with us that it was a lot more time-consuming to be a chair or vice chair within the neighborhood council than they had maybe anticipated. And, you know, as I know, all of you probably know, any of us that have been in a chair leadership position, sometimes it's thankless. It's a lot of work and it's not appreciated maybe as much as it should be. And so they did, you know, suggest, hey, it would be nice to be, you know, receive some sort of incentive, some sort of stipend, something to recognize the work that we are doing. Other feedback that kind of emerged were, you know, and this, again, I would caution, it was from the surveys, from the focus groups. It's not representative of all of our neighborhood councils. But of some of the feedback we had received was that, for some, they had few voices that were loud that dominated meetings. So there wasn't a great facilitation in making sure all voices were represented. Instead, certain voices were the ones that kind of dominated and the ones that were heard the most. So hopefully, being able to equip leaders to be able to, you know, invite all voices without making, you know, I think it's a very delicate balance of trying to make sure that a more vocal person, someone who's more engaged, doesn't feel like their opinion doesn't matter and we're tired of hearing it, but allowing other people to engage in that process. So that was another key finding. I kind of already touched on that concern about the time commitment and the burnout. You know, I think that's why we see so many of the retired generation being in that leadership role is, for the most part, they're the ones that have more of the time. But they're also tired. They've got an active retirement life that they want to be engaged in. So what's that balance point there? Again, kind of already talked on that, lack of stipend or token of appreciation. Strengths, I think, is always something that is important to mention with this. And we do have great subject matter experts within the neighborhood council system. That's one benefit of having long-serving leadership role, people who've been involved for a long time, is they really kind of figured out the process of how to engage with the city. What are the right questions to ask? You know, perhaps some of that might be, you're not getting the answer you want because you're not asking the right question. So that was something that came up. One piece of feedback that we really received from the neighborhood surveys was regarding how the neighborhood councils provided a sense of safety, that they could go to those neighborhood council meetings, get to know their neighbors, and increase that neighborhood building. Relationship building goes along with that, just again, building those neighborhood relationships. And information sharing. They did share that it was a really good way to learn about what was going on in their neighborhood, maybe getting, you know, there's a lot out there. I think we do a pretty decent job of the city of trying to push out as much information as possible. But if you're not actively looking for that, it might be all of a sudden a surprise to find out that they're putting in a development, or they're making a major change to your road. And so the neighborhood council is a way to maybe get that in a more concentrated format. So the leadership skills needed that we identified, again, kind of from doing those surveys and the interviews, that we'd identified as kind of being the, you know, repeated, came across many times, was that knowledge of city process. How are things happening? How does it work? I know it's no surprise to anybody on council, but having that understanding of what's appropriate to go to a city council member and what's appropriate to go to administration, to a city staff member, that balance between making policy and carrying out policy. Running effective meetings, again, how you facilitate, make sure that you hear all the voices, have them be efficient and not run on too long so people don't get bored and continue to still engage. Interpersonal communication can be another one. That was some feedback that we received on, perhaps, if someone was saying, hey, we've already heard from you and you need to be quiet now, and the manner they were doing that wasn't very professional or polite, and that can be off-putting some people. So working on a way to be more open and reflective and not put out, you know, a negative experience. Conflict resolution goes along right with that, trying to resolve those neighborhood conflicts. That's something that came up as well is, unfortunately, sometimes kind of things are what they are. You know, we've got limitations, there's a regulation in place, there's a law. And maybe a certain neighborhood member doesn't like that and keeps bringing it up. Having the chair be able to have tools in order how to kind of resolve that if there's a conflict between two members. One feels very strongly on one way, one feels strongly on another. How do you resolve that? One thing that we did turn into was being able to outreach to businesses and other residents. How do you get people engaged? How do you, you know, really get them to want to be aware of the neighborhood council system? That was one thing that kind of came out through the survey is, you know, only, you know, off the top of my head, I don't remember, but it was less than half of citizens had even heard of the neighborhood council system. It was more than a quarter, but, you know, definite improvement could be made there. Very little acknowledgement of the community assembly system. So that was something that, but people weren't aware of at all. So that could be another area of, oh, I am so sorry. Thanks for letting me know that.
So Michael Cathcart, our council member, said he only has a black screen. However, I was seeing you. I think others were seeing you.
You were able to see, okay.
We were able to see it. We did, we still don't have Rochelle. I'm not sure what happened, but we can hear into you and we see your screen.
Okay, great, perfect. Looks like he's here now, so apologies on that. So again, doing those outreaches to the business districts, you know, improving that engagement in that area and try to get more people involved. And I, well, I think I understand Rochelle will go comment here on the DEI, but the but parentheses. So one thing that came up that was really interesting to all of us when we were doing sort of the debrief and going through the data was, you know, we asked questions regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, we tried to, that can be sort of a negative connotation for some individuals. So we were really careful on how we worded that question. But again, trying to, you know, make sure that, was that something that was important to you? And it came out through, like, individual comments that that was something that was important to them. But when we asked questions regarding, you know, what would be your priorities for leadership training, not a single person picked that as something that would be a priority. So that was a little alarming, concerning to us, but it was identified as being something that, you know, we want to increase the diversity and equity on our, and inclusion in our neighborhood councils. But it's not something that we feel we want training on. So that's definitely a divide that we need to dig into a little bit more and see what we can do. And I don't want to speak for Rochelle, but I think some of the ways that we're looking at doing that is perhaps having it be a little bit more subtle, as in in-your-face, and slowly make those improvements that way. So it does look like Rochelle might be back. See her in the chat. I think we're doing okay, Rochelle. I'll keep going unless you're able to get on now.
Feel free to chime in, Rochelle. Why don't you finish up, Carly?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't have audio for the last, I don't know, five minutes or so. Sorry, I don't know what's going on.
Feel free to take over now that you're back on, Rochelle.
I have no idea. Can you tell me where it was left off? I'm sorry.
I was just finishing the conversation on our findings on the DEI and interpreting your parentheses on but and explaining that I think it's, again, that it was identified but not prioritized.
Okay. Did my, sorry, did my presentation get completely cut off?
Yes. We lost you almost right at the beginning, so I've been taking it on from there.
Wow, okay, that's interesting, because I just went through the whole presentation. Okay, wow, well, sorry, everyone. Yes, technology, yes. So to continue, what we heard from folks is that, in addition to these topics that were presented, we were also requested to have a hybrid format for a learning program, which would be both in-person and virtual. Again, one of the benefits of people becoming more acquainted with things like Zoom. Childcare was requested. Application to real life, people want to make sure, make sure that they're able to apply straight to things that are going on in their neighborhood, so that practice piece of it. And they want to learn from experienced leaders. In fact, they want to have mentors. They want to be able to talk to other neighborhood leaders who are going through similar things. Next slide. So the primary recommendations that we want to leave with the city council, these are not all of them, and there's actually quite a few that are listed in our final report, which we will make available to everyone. But these are the things that I want to share specifically today. First is that there is a real desire for some kind of stipend or incentive for council chairs. And that's coming from the recognition that they're not getting paid. There are, many of them were doing a lot of work to do this. We don't necessarily agree that this should be a part-time job, but it certainly would incentivize participation of people from non-retired populations to be more involved. We would really recommend, moving forward with Council President Beggs' original vision for this leadership program, which was that three-part model I mentioned earlier. The essential leadership skills that are needed for anyone in a neighborhood council, the awareness of diversity, equity, and inclusion so that they can really bring people in from different populations in their local community, and a better understanding of city processes. I'll just add that I was describing this proposal to one neighborhood chair or past chair, and I said, you know, what do you think about this proposal? And she said, wow, Council President Beggs nailed it. That's exactly what we need if we're going to be successful as neighborhood council leaders. I would recommend that we partner with the Building Stronger Neighborhoods Committee from the Community Assembly because they already have a great deal of knowledge and resources to share. And so I want to involve them and make sure that we're recognizing their experience and including that in this program. We like to identify other seasoned leaders to involve in our next steps so that we're honoring the work that people have done and the knowledge that they have. And we'd like to develop an online library of videos and resources. There is a website that has been started through the BSM groups. We want to add to that and make it even more robust. Next slide. So a proposal to the city council. Gonzaga School of Leadership Studies has really appreciated this project and has enjoyed it. I have enjoyed it a great deal. We'd like to continue partnering with the Office of Neighborhood Services to do this work. We'd like to develop a leadership program curriculum this fall. And that would include creating this video library that I just talked about. Our idea is if we can start with about 12 to 15 10-minute videos on a variety of different topics related to essential leadership skills, understanding of city processes, and diversity, equity, and inclusion, then we're going to have these as resources to anyone and, you know, regardless of their position, anyone in the city who wants to have some more, you know, tips and tricks and best practices up their sleeve. We'd like to promote the leadership program to new and emerging neighborhood leaders from each district. I want to make sure that we've really punctuated that. Our goal is not to take people who have been doing this work for 10 years, five years, but the new and the people who are thinking about it. Who do we want to bring into the fold and prepare them for this kind of work? We'd identify participants, instructors, and presenters this fall, and then pilot the program from January to June approximately. And we're shooting for about 12 participants. That's a really good number to start with in a pilot. The stipends, we really believe, would be helpful for participation. I think it's really more about the gesture. I don't think even for people, it's about, you know, a certain money amount, dollar amount. It's really about acknowledging that people are spending their time and giving it to their neighborhoods. I believe there's a great potential for this to be a certificate and civic legal I believe there's a great potential for this to be a certificate in civic leadership or something along those lines from Gonzaga University, and I believe that there would be great support for this. I also think for our neighborhood leaders who may not have a college degree, this would be something really important and meaningful for them, to have this credential from Gonzaga University. In terms of the budget, $25,000 was budgeted for this entire program for this fiscal year. We spent $12,000 total on the assessment process, which was about six months. And we'd like to use the remaining $13,000 for curriculum development and for the creation of those videos, which we would do in-house at Gonzaga using our really stellar design and production team. And with that, I just want to thank everyone. I apologize for the tech issues. It seems that I might have been the only one experiencing them, but really thank you all. A special thanks to Council President Beggs for his trust in the School of Leadership Studies, his trust in myself, and truly for the partnership with Carly Courtwright and her team, because this was a really, really meaningful project to work on. And I can say that our neighborhood leaders and residents had a lot to say and had a lot of excitement for the idea of a leadership program that could help them become more successful and more effective in achieving their goals in their neighborhoods. So with that, I think we can open it up to questions and comments.
Questions. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. What a great program. Thanks so much, Rachel and Carly. I'm wondering, is this something that council can access and learn from as well?
I certainly think so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this, the work that we would be doing with the neighborhood councils, I think we'll obviously be focusing on in the neighborhoods, but I do think that it's going to be easily applied to other areas of the city. This is a good place to start so that we can really make sure that we're starting right at the ground level, but again, has lots of potential for other applications.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll chime in, Rochelle. I think it's great that you're going to look at a video library or an online library because one of the things that we found in the neighborhood council process, and I came from that background, is that there's always turnover, and we really need to constantly be reeducating folks. And, you know, I hope maybe in that packet or in that suite of videos that you include basically an onboarding process for how you function with the city and how to do a basics of running a meeting and such, and how to run for office for that. For the leadership piece or the sponsorship and getting certification, of course, I encourage every member of the council to do something like that, and I want to point you to the Association of Washington Cities, which has a very diverse education series for municipal leadership. It's called the Certificate of Municipal Leadership that they award, and an Advanced Certificate Municipal Leadership. I'm sure they have a lot of text you can borrow from and formatting would be probably very helpful for you to model so you wouldn't have to start from scratch. So thank you for this. I'm excited that you've got enough funds left over to deliver, and I know that the neighborhoods will really appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mum. And can you repeat the name of the institution that has the Certificate of Municipal Leadership?
It's called the Association of Washington Cities, and it trains all of us, all 281 cities and all the council members and mayors.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Thank you, Rochelle. Is that all today?
Yes, thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you, council.
Our next topic should be fairly brief. We had set this date as one of the early dates to address opening our council meetings back up to the public. Any thoughts or comments on that at this point? Or would you like to defer this to another month till the numbers come down? Council President.
Yeah, you know, when we deferred this, it was before the Delta virus variant really got things. So I'm just thinking that we're going to stay at the same status until things change. But we did say that we would bring it back to council for any other comment, but that's my recommendation is that we keep in current status. As you've seen, we just got an email from Administrator Johnny Perkins that they're slowing the return to city council. I just don't see us going to in-person city council meetings anytime soon. So I just think we should continue the current course, and once things change, then we'll bring it up again. That's my recommendation.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I 100% agree. I think we have to err on the side of caution at this point, and I think it's our obligation to set an example. So I would, I would 100% agree with Council President.
I just want to say, I just really want to thank the public for their understanding and to continue to communicate with us in all the fashions that you can. You can call us, you can email us, you can mail us. You can attend all our meetings. Our meetings are now all televised and/or put on Facebook to watch live. And you're welcome to attend our council meetings, our legislative sessions, and participate. And just call in and be a part of what we're doing, and we really do want to hear from you, even though you can't right now come down here safely, but as soon as we can do that, we'd like to revisit it. I'm going to put a date out there of October 7th for the next study session to revisit. Does that feel comfortable to everyone? Okay, great. We'll look at October 7th to revisit it. Thank you. Next, we have the ARPA updates, and who wants to lead that? Is that Councilwoman Wilkerson? Oh, I skipped.
You are, actually, you're missing Inga.
I missed Inga. How could I? Well, I really didn't want to talk about that, but I guess I have to. I wanted to talk about ARPA. All right, Inga, thank you for being patient, and we do want to talk about I-95 and the corridor study. It's a very important piece of our community that has continued to have challenges. So welcome, Inga. You have about 30 minutes. Thank you.
All right, screen showing up. So I'm mostly going to focus on the recommendations that are coming out of this study, but the first two slides, I'm just going to kind of remind you of what the goals were. We were trying to focus this project on improving the safety conditions on 195 and I-90, where they join together, but maintaining mobility, accommodating needs for future development, increasing multimoto options, and, sorry, got to hide a text box there, and something that we could actually fund and build because the prior plans have been just way too large. And so this was a study that we chipped in some money for at WashDOT, and it was led by SRTC to make sure that they involved everybody in the region. This is the study area, so pretty much the whole 195 corridor with a few little added areas along I-90. We touched on Hatch Road and then just a little ways towards the West Plains. So the first thing I'm going to touch on is the near-term project solutions that have come out of this. So these are projects that, right now, are going to be funded by a group of developers. We have a number of development projects that have been approved so far. That would be the Summit, the Greens at Meadow Lane, either is approved or is in process for hearing. Wheatland Estates, I think, is going to hearing very shortly, and then Tangle Bridge has been approved. And these all have conditions that say they can't move forward until these certain improvements are built. All of the rest of them below that list are all in various stages of trying to figure out their utility impacts and how they're going to handle that, but I expect them to have the same transportation conditions in the end once they get to hearing. So those conditions are that they can't move forward until they build these three projects. And so the first one is going to be turning the intersection of 195 at 16th, just the west leg only, turn that into a right-in, right-out, plus allow left-in off of US 195. So the impact this will have is that people who are coming out of 16th from under the Fish Lake Trail Bridge, they will no longer be able to go straight across or turn left and get onto the freeway. Instead, they'll have to go out onto Lyndicky and head north onto Sunset Boulevard to get back around to I-90. The next one is to reconnect Inland Empire Way, and this would be a one-way northbound connection for now. They will basically extend the merge lane that comes off of Spokane and Chaney going north right now and give you the option to either get onto Inland Empire Way or continue going straight to merge onto 195 northbound. And so that will make it easier for people who are headed to downtown to kind of default to Inland Empire Way in the morning as their commute route rather than 195. This can be done while still maintaining the shared use pathway that's there now. And then the third project that this developer group would do is to modify the intersection of US 195 and Meadow Lane and put in some form of a J-turn. It may not look exactly like this. We've been kind of going back and forth on different design options, but the idea is to mitigate that eastbound, eastbound to northbound turning movement for people coming from Eagle Ridge who want to go north to downtown. That's the one that we think is starting to hit levels where the collisions are more likely to happen. And so we want to give those options to do that. So I don't know what the timing of these is going to be yet. It's interdependent with how the utility gets figured out with all these developments because they kind of need them all to be moving forward and paying at the same time to make it work. But probably within the next couple of years, I think we'll see something on all of these. So the next part I want to discuss is the other key investments that are coming out of the study, and these are the longer-term ones. So I broke these up into what I think will be, actually, this is a map showing the key investments plus the add-ons. It's very busy, so I'm just going to skip it. The, there's also a cost summary of the major investments. It's somewhere around $90 million, but I don't think this has all the bike and pet improvements added on yet, so to do all of it, it can be a bit higher than that. So I want to first talk about the ones that I think are likely to be needed within the 10-year timeframe. And this is my best guess as to how it's going to happen. I think the next one that will be needed, and this one will require city funding and participation, is to build Lyndicky down on the west side of 195 as the frontage road between 16th and Thorpe. And we figured out a way to do this with having very little impact on the Fish Lake Trail. We will rebuild that low railroad bridge because we have trucks that keep getting stuck under it anyway, and raise it up so that that's no longer a problem and maintain the great separation of the trail. So I think this one is probably going to be the fourth project that needs to occur out there on the corridor. We do already have it in our Impact View Program, and it's on our arterial street map. So at least those steps have been done, but we haven't really identified how we're going to fund it. The next one, I think that will become an issue, is the turns down at Hatch Road in US 195. There is a pretty significant traffic pattern that goes back and forth between the Eagle Ridge area and the schools and the commercial district up near 57th and Regal. And so anytime we have a new development coming, it adds trips to this area, and we're starting to get more and more complaints about it. So I think that will need to be addressed probably fairly soon. We also get a lot of requests for people who want to be able to walk to the grocery store. And granted, there aren't a lot of residents within walking distance, but there is, at least the Sunny Creek, I think it's like a retirement community right there. They don't, I see people walking back and forth to Yokes, but they don't have any kind of a sidewalk or the shoulders maybe like two feet. So it would be nice to make an improvement there for them. And also along Colton Drive, so that people who do decide to walk down Lincoln Boulevard, they have the option to keep going. This is also critical infrastructure for transit service, which I'll touch on in a moment. One of the other projects that I'd like to see done is to, what I call, right-sizing Chaney-Spokane Road. We have a little section of five-lane road there for no particular reason that I can see. And we have the opportunity to just put that to three lanes. It's, you know, it's two lanes on the south end, it's two lanes on the north end. We can maintain the center turn lane and then repurpose some of that right away to provide a shared use pathway on one side or the other. And then connecting into that, that would tie into the existing shared use path that runs across the Chaney-Spokane interchange and goes north on the east side. But we would also have the opportunity to tie it in on the west side of 195 and connect into the Latag Glen Development, which is pending approval, pretty soon as you go to hearing examiner. And we'll add quite a few homes on the west side, plus we have, I think, like a community of manufactured homes in there, and then an RV park that's always full in that area. So this would give them an option to be able to walk and bike from where they're at down to the commercial district. So there was a lot of talk about STA service, and the ongoing service itself, I think, is the difficult part to tackle just because of the operations costs. But we did talk about where a parking ride could be best located for this area, and so we talked about doing something at the Yokes Shopping Center, which is where people who use the STA van pool currently park their vehicles and meet up. But then there's also an opportunity to try to do something down by the Eagle Ridge-Meadle Lane area where it's a little closer to where all the homes are. So those are things that I think STA will continue to evaluate in the future.
Inga, if I can stop you there for a second, we, four of us were at the, four of us were at the STA meeting yesterday where it, we held a strategic workshop. We have extra funding available from a federal pass-through to do purchases for things like park and rides, and they are actually calling for projects and looking at some. So we'll loop back with you on that. This might qualify.
Okay, great. So that was the end of the nearer-term projects. Did you have any questions on those before I move on to the long-term ones? Councilmember Kinnear?
Thanks. What's the possibility of WashDOT partnering with us to help pay, number one? Or asking for help from SRTC? And then surrounding areas, the city isn't the only, we're not the only ones that use 195. And so I'm thinking about, you know, county funding, other people participating in helping fund this. That's my first question. My second question is, when you use Inland Empire Way, what happens when you get, so how do you transition into downtown? What's the route?
Okay, I'll answer that one first because I, that's the way I go. You, it puts you onto Sunset Boulevard, and then you take Second and Third Avenue into downtown.
Okay, good. Thanks.
So on the funding side, yes, we are expecting that WashDOT will participate in a lot of this. They have told us that from the onset when we started the study, that they were willing to participate and try to, I guess, prioritize this at the state level. We'll have to start talking with them about how that happens. I think we also have a good chance to get federal funding for certain elements of it through SRTC.
No chance of getting the county to help out with that?
Oh, actually, I did, I forgot to mention this. One of the projects that I had on that list of developers' funding is actually in Spangle, and they're building 200 homes, and they are contributing to those improvements as well. So I don't think that's out of the realm of possibility. It just has to be a direct enough impact that we can say, "Yes, you need to participate." Okay, so the long-range projects, one of them is going to be taking Inland Empire Way and in the And in the prior slides, I showed that we would do a one-way northbound connection. This would be converting it into a two-way connection. This is more complicated because it requires realigning the main line of US-95 so that we have enough room to fit both directions of Inland Empire Way and keep our shared use path underneath the railroad bridge. So this would obviously be one where we would expect DRT to participate. And one of the nice things about this proposal is that it provides a route for transit service. One of the things that I've heard from STA is that when they do transit service, they're really looking to go back and forth on the same road. They used to have a loop route that served the Laton Valley, and it wasn't very well utilized. And in looking at what kind of service might work for this area, they said it really needs to be out and back on the same street. They don't want to do a loop again because it just doesn't get the ridership. So this would provide that opportunity. Another one, this is a little farther south, would be to make a connection, another frontage road between Qualchon Drive and Meadow Lane. And so this would provide just another route for the residents in that area. Instead of getting directly onto US-195, they could wind their way through the city arterial system and get onto Inland Empire Way to head north. Marshall Road is an existing parallel route, but it's unpaved, and it has very few homes along it. Long-term, I think we probably need to upgrade this to a collector and plan on paving it. It'll be a ways out there, but something we should plan for. The plan came up with this project, which is a great idea, but it's going to be really expensive. So this is to build 44th Avenue from Marshall Road at the west end and also connects with the Fish Lake Trail right there, and bring it over the top of the BNSF Railroad. And then it has a very, very tight S-turn with lots of walls before it connects down to Chaney-Spookan Road and Qualchon. This would provide a very nice direct connection, good connectivity in all directions. But it's going to take a lot of, I guess, a lot of density out there to really support this. And so I don't see this until probably the very tail end of this study. In the meantime, we could look at just building 44th Avenue into this property and allow it to be used for local circulation, but not do the part that goes across the railroad yet. And then we also have, this one was kind of a last-minute addition, so I don't have a good image of it. Looking at extending the arterial, which is, I guess it's Meadow Lane is the name of the road there that goes in front of Eagle Ridge Golf Course. It would just be extended southward paralleling US-195. And this is the property that is owned by Douglas's right now. And they're looking at maybe trying to do some different types of development patterns, not just single-family. They've been talking with planning about this. So this would be a spot where we would just want to extend a collector road through their development in some fashion and then tie it back into US-195 just north of Hatch Road. And so the idea here is just to create that parallel route all the way down to Hatch. And this was something the DOT asked for kind of towards the end of the process. So that's the end of the projects. Any questions on those? No? Okay. So the next steps for this, this entire study is going to go before the SRTC board at their September meeting. And I'm not sure if you're going to vote on it then or if it's just the preview and then voting in October. But we wanted to make sure that our board members had a preview on it before going into that next meeting. After that, I expect that these projects are going to get added to SRTC's Regional Transportation Plan Update, which is the Horizon 2045. They're trying to get that adopted by the end of this year. And so we've been reviewing the first couple of chapters. I haven't seen the ones that show the project list yet, but I expect these will be in there. And then as we go through and do updates of our comprehensive plan, we'll need to add a couple of projects to the arterial street map, which we're planning to do a little update to that this fall, and then also to the bicycle map at some point.
Inga, I have a process question. So you said all these projects would be added. Is there a review or prioritization? Like, what if council said, one of these projects is great, we want that to be at the top? Or another one of these, no, take that off?
So you mean prioritization within our own plan?
Well, you have a list of 18.
Yep.
And the assumption is all 18 will make it to SRTC. Is there a review, I mean, shouldn't we weigh in and say what order we think is most important?
I don't know if they're going to order them. You know, I haven't had that conversation with them yet. So, because they haven't really started talking about future projects for the plan, so I don't know. I don't think last time we actually ordered them. I want to say it was just a list. I don't know. Catherine, do you have any thoughts on that?
I apologize, I do not.
Councilwoman Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess just on that note, what does it mean then to have it added to the SRTC's Horizon 45? And what does that mean in terms of these projects actually occurring in the future then?
So it means they get added to what we call the regional priority list. And so that whenever we apply for any kind of grant funding through SRTC, that's usually one of the boxes that we, either we can check it or we can't. And it'll give us a couple more points on our application. It also means that it's usually something that will go on the list that gets forwarded to the state legislature or at the federal level if we're trying to seek a new one.
So are all of our various, like our arterial road projects, are all of those on the SRTC list then?
No, they generally have to be on a principal arterial level roadway or higher. And so since we haven't done all the classification on these yet, so we'll have to look and see what they fit best as. But they generally need to be on the regional priority list to be able to do that.
Okay.
I'm just going to suggest, go ahead Catherine.
To add a little bit more context to your question, Councilwoman Cathcart, SRTC for the last, I would say, six to eight years has been actively trying to work towards that regional concept that once SRTC board approves it, that it does flow back to the agencies that are impacted, who then would accept them. So that's why we wanted to make sure we're heightening the discussion with all of council members because effectively, once SRTC board says, "Go do it," that those agencies are now tasked with being a part of that solution. Obviously, in this particular case, we are expecting DOT to be a significant funding partner here. But as a general statement for SRTC, any of their studies that they do finalize and approve, there is that growing expectation that they immediately turn around to the agencies to make them happen. So if there is any concern or disagreement, we really want to make sure that that's voiced early and often through the process.
Glad to hear that. I want to bring in Councilmember Kinnear, who sits on SRTC with me. It seems that it might make sense internally that we should prioritize so we can telegraph to SRTC what is the highest value for our city so we don't get the cart before the horse on a few things.
I would agree. And I'm wondering if you could speak into your microphone a little bit closer. You're hard to hear.
Thank you. So we'll try to do that. Is this being presented to us next Thursday at SRTC?
Last I heard it was, but I haven't seen the agenda yet.
Okay, we'll work with Shawna Harshman and with you and get your input. Of course, we want Catherine and Inga, your input on what you think needs to be done first. I think that helps them. I know it would help me as a board member.
Councilmember Moma, the agenda is now in your inbox. It just got sent for SRTC.
All right, Inga, ready to wrap up? You have anything more?
I have one more slide. So a couple of other steps that we think need to be considered. It's been very difficult for, on the development side, to get anything through the process, at least on the transportation end, with WashDOT in this corridor because they keep asking for studies from every single developer. This has not been our practice in the city since we adopted the Impact Free program years ago because one of the purposes of that was to make it a little more predictable and easier for the developers in exchange for paying the fees. I'm hoping that we can come to some kind of an understanding, hopefully through an MOU with WashDOT once this is adopted, that the city would be allowed to do a certain amount of development within this area before further study is needed. I'm sure this will come with a, you know, you can do X amount of homes if you build the Lyndicky extension or if we find funding for the Hatch Road J-turn. It'll probably be something like that. But that's something that we need to work on with staff so that we don't have to keep asking the developers to pay $20,000 for a traffic study. We also need to formalize the WashDOT funding commitment, which you brought up. That is very, very important, and they've been making promises to us that they want to help, but we need to make sure that actually happens. And then on the Impact Free program, we've had a little bit of discussion in the past about how it might make sense to break off the 195 corridor separately from the rest of the South Hill and establish a new Impact Free district. So I don't know what the timing of that needs to be, but something that we'll probably want to look at at some point. That's all I have. Any other questions? I'll just touch the study up here for a second in case anybody wants to look it up.
I am not seeing anyone raising their hand. There's a lot here to digest. Did you send this to us separately or could you if you haven't yet?
I certainly can.
Thank you. Yeah, anytime you can send these ahead of time for study session, we might have more questions. It kind of sparks some dialogue. Thank you. Very thorough, great presentation, Inga, as always. Catherine, good to see you. And if no one has any more on this, we will now move to ARPA, and that's Council President Beggs.
Yes, thanks, everyone. And I never quite know how my voice is going to be from day to day, but I think I can get through this, it sounds like. So ARPA stands for American Rescue Plan Act. And we have a city council work group that consists of Councilmember Wilkerson, Councilmember Moma, myself, along with some staff support. It's been very helpful. We have four documents for you today. They're very dense. And just so, other than the flow chart, which is not. And just so you know, our communication staff have already been drafting public-friendly and accessible versions of this since that's going to be needed. But I gave you the full deal. I want to distinguish between two sets of documents. The most important today is the flow chart and the draft process memo because we've worked the most on that. We vetted that fully with the administration and gotten all their feedback on it. And these versions reflect that feedback. Again, the memo about the narrative has been very simplified in another version, but I thought I would leave it in the extensive one for you. Then there's two other documents that we'll talk about today, but are still much more draft. And we have not gotten the administration feedback on that yet. And that is a first draft on criteria for what council will use to decide what they fund and not fund is one. And so again, we put together what we thought as our recommendations, but you'll see that there are plenty of blanks, and we're looking for feedback on that today or by email after this. Then the other one is, you might recall, there's four different phases. There's a replenishment phase, a reach-out phase, a resiliency, and a direct relief phase. The replenishment phase, we have a pretty extensive memo that analyzes how much money. Basically, based on the administration's data to us, it looks like we're going to be down about $20 million in city revenues from COVID. And that's broken out by revenue fund. And so there's a memo there that explains those various funds and what the anticipated lost revenues. And then it has what I call a straw-person analysis of potential projects. So for the most part, our group has decided we don't want to just give the money back to the departments. We want it actually to go out into the community, but do it by revenue fund. So again, if we're using parks money, the lost revenues in parks, we'd be using it for parks equipment or parks scholarships for swimming and things like that as opposed to just giving it to the park board. Traffic calming, the same sort of thing, is like, yes, we can spend it on traffic calming, but we have some projects that might get a little more bang for the buck in the public. Same for admissions tax on how do we really boost up future admissions taxes and things like that. So those two documents, which we'll get to later, are a really meant for a really broad comment. The first two documents are pretty flushed out, but again, we're looking for your comments. So I'm going to start with the graphic on the process. And I don't know if Hannah Lee can share that document. I'm just going to hit some high points and then ask for questions or comments. So this is a one-page document that has a graphic representation of the process. And so again, this is trying to explain to people transparently how something happens. And so what we decided to recommend was, we're making it super easy for anyone to propose something. And when I'm saying propose something, this is a project, not a direct aid. Anybody who's looking for direct aid for a family, a business, or a nonprofit, that's going to be a completely separate process. We will have vendors for that, similar to what we did for the CARES Act, where businesses could apply directly for aid. They won't be coming to city council. City council will set the criteria for the direct aid, but they'll need a process. So this is not that. This is if you have an idea for a project, if you want to help with expanding childcare, if you want to help neighborhood business associations, things like that. So anyway, anyone can submit an idea by just sending an email to Mackenzie Lloyd, who's our project coordinator. And ideally, you know, we have an application template that you can use, but you don't have to. We're making it super accessible. Anybody can do it from their smartphone or their email or a letter. They can just send it in. So the community can send in ideas. Any council member can send in an idea. The administration can send in ideas. And we've told the administration that if they have ideas that they care about, we will, of course, give them prompt consideration. We sent an email back in May, I believe, or it might have been June, but I think it was May, asking for specifics from the administration. And I think, except for one on paying for some admin costs, we haven't gotten any yet. But we want to make it clear that anybody could do that. Those will be then put in a database. And we will make those databases available to any council member that wants to see the big basket of anything that anyone's done. Along the way, of course, we've done Thought Exchange. We've gotten lots of ideas from Thought Exchange. You'll be coming up, not any day, but soon, an analysis of what Thought Exchange, with the high-level feedback from Thought Exchange, so that you'll have that in your world. So anyway, one of the first, most important things in this is we're going to find out what ideas have other potential funding. For example, people have put in rental assistance. Well, we have about $9 million still of rental assistance to distribute. So we're going to divide ideas that have that, ideas that are likely going to be in any one of, either of the infrastructure proposals, anything where commerce has a lot of money. I think the federal government just did something on housing, affordable housing. I think the federal government just did something on housing, affordable housing, they announced yesterday that they're doing. So if there's another funding source for that, we're going to divide the database into things that look like ARPA is the only source, and then the other half of the database will be, ARPA is a source, but there are other sources. So we think it's important to do that. But essentially, the work of the city council work group then is going to be to look, and to start with the ARPA only, and to look at proposals that we think city council will want to look at. And that will be partly us looking at it, but it will also be if city council members, if you see one that you feel strongly about, please email, email us, the three of us, and say, hey, I want you to look at, let's say, expanding private childcare, looking at existing childcare providers and expanding that. So if you have one, we want to give prompt consideration to the ones you're interested in. So you will have that opportunity. Once we've agreed on this process formally, that's our job, is to work for you. Once we are picking something from the overall basket to bring it out, Mackenzie is going to do a little, what we call a mini briefing paper to the city council work group, kind of explaining what it is. And then we will choose, we meet weekly, and we will try to come up with a handful of these to go over every week. And then if we think that there'll be support for the council based on the criteria that council has given us, then we'll forward it first to the administration on, on a Tuesday when we, when we decide, give it to them, and we'll say, hey, administration, get that back to us by next Tuesday. Any initial feedback, you know, do you like it, do you don't, do you have other ideas? And then we'll put it on study council for the following week. So it'll be about nine days after we look at it. And then we'll hear, we'll present it to you as a mini, with a white paper, pretty much a one-pager, we'll present it to you as city council, and we'll get your feedback. And there's essentially a few options. One, there's not four members who are supportive of it, so it just goes away for the foreseeable future. It could be at the other extreme, that this is something that should be an early out. We should get this out the door as soon as possible. It could also be, we need more information. Or it could be, yes, we like this, but, you know, there's only $80 million, only $80 million, and there's all these hundreds of proposals, and so we want to save it for further prioritization. So it could be any one of those four options. If it's an early out, or it's gotten prioritization at some point, then it goes to the administration council work group, and we meet every other Friday. And then at that point, we have a process where we use council staff and administration staff to flush out the proposal and work on it. Now, I should have mentioned earlier, before we are going to bring it to council, full council, or submit it to the administration, we're going to do an eligibility criteria assessment, so that we're not spending, wasting our time on something that's not there. There are seven big-picture buckets of criteria. Some of them can overlap. And then underneath each of those seven buckets, there's all multiple sub-criteria. The idea that we're proposing to the administration, and they've mostly signed on, is that we're going to hire an outside independent vendor so that we can take it to. And the advantage of that is they will be subject matter experts, and also whatever they tell us, we can bank on it because they're putting their professional word. If for some reason there'd be an audit finding, they would probably be responsible for curing that for us. But we're really, both the administration and the council work group feel strongly that we need to make sure before we raise the public's expectation that it be eligible. So just to be clear, when the public first sees a proposal, it will be when it's coming to study session after eligibility has been there. Then, once it's gone through the council-administration, administration process of flushing it out, then it will come back to council for a final vote to fund contracts. So that's, in a nutshell, a process where making sure the administration is fully engaged early on in the process, that they can have their proposals heard and considered, and that they get their feedback early on. So I'm going to take a breath and a pause, and if somebody has a question, since it's a screen share, I see Councilmember Cathcart, I'll go with that. Yeah, Councilmember Cathcart.
Thank you. I guess for me to say that I'm frustrated by the process would be an understatement. I mean, I just recall two months ago having this conversation, that the full council would be the filter, not the subcommittee of council. And there still is no representation from Northeast Spokane on that subcommittee. And so I'm really frustrated that essentially, all the ideas that are put out there are not going to be looked at or considered by council. It'll be filtered, and we won't all have an opportunity to present our ideas. In fact, I submitted mine six weeks ago, and it's been radio silence ever since.
I don't think, let's restate that, Mr. Cathcart, because I'm not sure that's what I heard.
Yeah, let me, no, let me, I don't think you're, let me, let me clarify something. So we haven't, we haven't looked at any specific ones, because we're still working on the process. If you have specific ones that you want considered, they will be considered by the full council, Councilmember Cathcart, unless it's not eligible.
Sure.
So our commitment to you as a council member is that if you want one considered, we do have to make sure it's eligible. So we have to do that. But if you want one considered, it will be considered.
But the way, but the way the flow chart is written, that's not what it says. It says that the subcommittee will determine.
No, but what I'm telling you is, and I have it in the narrative more than I do the flow chart, because the flow chart is simple. What I'm telling you is that if you, as an individual council member, have something you want considered, the council work group will make sure it gets considered unless it's not eligible. That would be, and if we think it's not eligible, we'll let you know that we don't think it's eligible. So the flow chart is simpler than the narrative. But yeah, the intent, we heard you loud and clear before that, but we're doing the legwork for you. So if you come to us and say, this is what you want, we will do our best to get, get it to the full council. So that is the intent. And if it doesn't quite reflect it on the, on the graphic, that's just a limitation on the graphic, but, and if it, if you read the narrative and it doesn't quite fully do it there, we'll adjust that narrative to, to make sure that that is the case, so you have assurance. That is the intent.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then second question would be on kind of the regional aspects of this, because some things could be shared between different entities. How would that work if there is the potential for that to occur?
Yeah. So the, we're exploring that with the region, so there's two, two options for that. One, or, or I shouldn't say two options, but two implications. One, I think the region is much slower on this than we are in the city, and we don't want to wait for them necessarily to get started, especially for early outs. But there is talk, and Tanya Wallace is negotiating with the county in Spokane Valley, that we have a protocol that anything that anybody applies for either entity will go in a portal so that anybody can see that, so that we can, so we could all see. So one, we know that somebody is asking for the county for money as well. And secondly, if there's an idea, so I'll use just an example, there's a proposal from Spokane Arts to come up with a film, a local film video incentive regionally. And so there's, there's room for that. So that would come to us as a proposal, but if there's, if there's legs on it with the county and/or Spokane Valley, we can still pursue that. But my qualification is that they seem to be going much slower and less formalized there. The second thing we're looking at is, even though we want to have our own eligibility of vendor, we're going to share that with those other entities, and they may also want to contract with the same vendor, just so we have a little bit of unity, but we're not going to wait for them to get around to it.
Great.
I also wanted to mention that Councilmember Stratton, who wasn't able to be with us here today, had been contributing to the ARPA committee, and now I'm rotating on. There's certainly opportunities for other council members in the future to rotate on and off of this committee. And of course, your staff member was attending and included, and any staff members can come, but because of public meeting law, we can only have three at a time, so, since Council President is leading that. So also, the projects are, as proposed, will be on a spreadsheet and available to all on a regular basis, so anyone can look at a proposal and see if they want to champion. And of course, Councilmember Cathcart or any council members can come to me, or Councilmember Wilkerson, or Councilmember Beggs, and talk to us about their projects or something that they want to collaborate with us on. So we welcome that.
Any more questions about the spreadsheet? I think, I'm not going to have us go through on the screen share, the long narrative that some lawyer drafted and is getting simplified, but I think we covered it, and I think, I appreciate your concern, Councilmember Cathcart, and I'm glad that we could clarify that, because yeah, the intent was to do that. But if you have particular comments about specific language in the narrative, please reach out to me, or either in a phone call, or an email, or just if you have a question. But basically, it just, yeah, it just goes into more detail about the graphics and tries to put in language that hopefully takes care of people's concerns. But with, with that, I would like to go to the document on criteria. And again, that is very draft at this point. We're looking for, we're looking for feedback from people. And there's two, there's really three different pieces that I think are important, and the first one, I don't know if we can make that bigger, Hannah Lee, is what would be the general criteria across the phases. And again, this is, these are, these are just terms that we came up with, and we support and we recommend, but I'm happy to hear today additional ones, or questions, or concerns about them. So there's the general criteria, regardless of what phase it's in. And then we'll go through a little bit of the various phases, some other ideas. And then the other thing that we have, and we don't, it's too soon to put the numbers on this, but, and I'll talk about it in a little bit, is trying to divide up the $80 million into potential targets for funding for each thing. But just to be clear, almost all of them overlap, so you could say, I want $10 million for a reach-out and $10 million for resiliency, but a lot of the reach-out and resiliency projects are the same, so it would really be $20 million for each. But if you could just take a look at this, one-time money, equity, economic opportunity, environmentally sustainable, catalyzes positive social and economic change, accelerates economic growth, especially locally-owned businesses, multicultural vibrancy, leveraging partnerships and other funding sources with other partners, minimizing administration of funds as a percentage of cost, and then meets historically unmet needs that have no other source of funding. So those are the 10 we came up with, but I'm open for, and again, you don't have, today's not your last opportunity, just your first opportunity. Any comments or questions about the general criteria?
Councilmember Cathcart.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Are there, like, any definitions of, of any of these terms later in the document?
Uh, there, no, they're not.
I'm just wondering, who will decide if it's sustainable, or if it catalyzes positive social, I mean, who will make that determination? Is it the subcommittee, or?
No, the council will make it. So that, that would be, the full city council would make that. The only, the only reference I see there is to the SMSC 1801030. That's just kind of our kitchen sink list of, of people that have been shut out of the system before. But yeah, no, council, it's just, what it's meant to do is twofold. For people who are applying, I shouldn't, maybe, not applying, but proposing ideas, we would want them to spend a little bit of time talking about this. And just to be clear, not, not everything is going to meet all 10, but obviously, the more that it meets, and then, and some of them are overlapping. But we're just trying to give people some guidance when they're, when they're proposing something, to say, well, council has put this language together, so you might want to hit that. And then when we're at a, a study session and we're talking about a particular proposal, you know, these things might mean different things to different council members, but people could do that. And, but again, it's not meant to be a, a formulaic, legalistic definition, it's, you know.
Councilmember Kinnear.
But it provides some context and framing. Councilmember Kinnear. We can't hear you.
So here's my concern. This is complicated.
Mm-hmm.
It is. Um, it's in English, but it's very not legalese. It, it's not consumer-friendly. How's that?
Well, just to, just to, just to tell you, there is a simple consumer-friendly version of this.
Okay.
Already drafted.
Okay.
I had the same concern.
Coming forward. And we'll circulate that after the meeting.
I had the same concern.
No, there's, there's already a consumer-friendly, accessible version of it, but I wanted to err on the side of the complex ones for people reviewing it, if they really want to get into the weeds on anything. But Lisa and Joy already have a simple one, and we will send that out right away so that you all can see that one as well. And when we, when we come to an agreement on it, that will be the version that we're using, so.
Okay, because, you know, I consider myself pretty well-educated, and this is making my eyes roll back in my head, so I'm glad we have something else. Thank you.
Very good feedback. The, the only reason it's so dense is that people have lots of specific concerns and little tweaks and things like that, and that was the only way I could figure out how to address all those little things. But in terms of it being publicly accessible, in terms of a document we would use at our study council meetings, there's a much simpler, it's only 25% as long as this.
I'd also like to weigh in, some of this is also for compliance reasons, and we're working with Tanya and her team to make sure that we have some of this language in there so when we do get audited, because they think all of the recipients probably will to some degree, that we have this all mapped out. So there's some of that in there as well.
Our, our communications team's already ahead of us, so, as well they are. They looked at this and said, oh, my God, brilliant. Okay, if there's someone else, I can only see so many people, so if someone else has something, volunteer. Otherwise, I'd like to go to the reach-out, resiliency criteria. And the reason that is, is the replenishment has its own memo. So on reach-out, what we did is, rather than come up with criteria, we made the decision to let the community come out with their, right? So reach-out is to nonprofits and businesses and neighborhoods, asking them what it is that they need, what proposals do they need. And so we didn't propose any, any criteria at this point, and we thought we would leave it to those folks to do that. So that doesn't have too much in it, other than that, that decision. As I mentioned earlier, we, we had some requests to set some initial goals, or how much at a minimum should be out to reach out, even though there's overlap, and so it could be quite a bit more than whatever this goal is. We haven't suggested any numbers yet at this point. I'm, I'm happy to hear them today, but I'm not really looking for them today, actually. I thought people could stew on that a little bit, it's a lot of information for today. So that's So that's reach-out. Any comments of that? Okay, then, resiliency, we put some general goals about sustainability, and, you know, leveraging, resetting the long term, so we're better off. And then the feedback that we got a lot about was housing and homelessness. So we called them housing initiatives, especially supporting homeownership. And so we put those in, that that seemed to be what, that was the talk of the town. So we put those in, but again, we're looking for feedback. Again, today's just your first day to give us feedback on that. But there could be other ones that people really want to include in that resiliency piece. So, and then, again, similar, we just put some placeholders for money, not just for resiliency as a phase, but affordable housing and capital for homelessness issues. So we put those in as a, again, council doesn't have to do that, but based on the feedback that we got in our work group, we thought people were asking for that. So just throwing that out for any early feedback at the moment. And again, I only see, I can see three council members. I don't see Betsy, so you have something, Betsy. But you're on the work group, so.
I texted you, it's just the four of us now.
Oh, okay, then I can see it. All right. All right, then I'll go to relief criteria. So this is kind of its own different thing. It's not as much overlap, because it's just direct relief. And again, as I mentioned at the top of the presentation, this is for people who directly would get assistance, either as families or individuals, businesses, small businesses, or nonprofit entities. And again, we would have a vendor who would do this. So this is about setting the criteria. And there is going to question of, when do we want to do this? Do we want to do this with, as part of our first tranche of money? So we have up to 40 million right now. Do we want to spend this money right now? Do we want to spend it in the next May, when we get more? I kind of lean on doing it earlier. I haven't discussed that with the work group, so that's just my own editorial comment. And so there is, basically, the criteria, we just put some in there, that we're trying to focus it on the people who are the neediest of the neediest, and who either didn't get COVID relief under cares, or didn't get much and still have a need, and don't have access to other types of relief. And so, again, there's an amount of money for how much total relief we should make as that bucket. And then, again, I put some money, how much should go to families, how much to go to nonprofits, how much should go to businesses. And I, you know, as you can see, the work group is recommending pretty low threshold, I mean, limiting the relief to the people who really need it the most, and not just having a giant business relief. And that might be different than what the county does. So those are just, again, those are our initial proposals for people to think about, and today is just your first opportunity to provide feedback.
I will mention that the county just announced that they gave some of their funds to, oh, what was the name of the center? Councilwoman Kinnear.
Um, Invision Center.
Invision Center, yeah.
Yeah. All right. We're pretty much at the end of time. I'm wondering, Hannah Lee, if you could just put the replenishment, the section on the lost revenues. You could just do that, and I'll just try to cover that really quickly. Yeah, so, again, replenishment, actually, this is a little, this one's a little bit out of date. We're estimating the parks is 1.6, so it's $20 million of lost revenues. Well, it's not out of date, I just forgot to do that header. So that header should say 20 million. Councilmember Cathcart.
I see city utilities on there. Are those, like, utility bills that didn't get paid? Is that what the 7.2 is from?
Those are, those are utility, and now that you ask me that, I'm not sure. I think those are utility taxes. So those are the general fund taxes on the utilities, I believe.
Okay. Well, I ask the question because I know with our rental assistance dollars, apparently some of that has been used for utility assistance.
Yeah, yeah.
And which, I'm not so sure is the best of ideas, since our rental assistance is so limited, and the need is greater than the amount we have. I feel like the rent should be the priority, and then we could figure out, if there's a need to backfill, how we would do that otherwise.
Yeah.
But that's why I was asking that question, because it could be doubling up on utilities.
I, you know what? That's a great question. Let me question it. I was assuming that was going to be our general fund tax on utilities, as opposed to unpaid. So, but I'll clarify that.
Okay.
The other thing that might be helpful is for us to categorize these, on what is the general fund and what is not. Because, for instance, parks, we'll go to parks. Libraries, you know, they're kind of a separate fund. But the enterprise stuff, like you said, Councilmember Cathcart, the city utilities, it'd be good to see what that breaks out. I also think there could be in there, because it's such a big number, that commercial was not using a lot of water and power. And so maybe, was that revenue lost? That's a question. So, which I think some of these funds actually could be used for.
Yeah.
And the retail sales and use tax, I know that's lost revenue that we didn't collect. So there are different types of funds, and then, you know, in thinking about this, it's also important, I think, to make the decision to find out, how are those doing without that? You know, how critical are, I know the Parks Department is crippled. So some of these, we might be able to absorb, like the retail sales and use tax, we might be able to absorb in the general fund. So that would be helpful, to have Matt Boston work on that, or somebody else.
Yeah. Just looking at this, and there's some things that I need to correct on this. So the idea was that there was about 20 million over two years, or, I mean, 20 million over the whole, so I see some things that need to get updated on that. But, yeah, and we'll clarify on the utilities, and we'll break it out, like you say, Councilmember Mom. Does it have to stay in the enterprise? Now, parks actually didn't, isn't hurting for money, because they didn't spend the money. So they actually aren't hurting as much. But there's certainly huge opportunities that we could use to leverage the revenues that they don't. And they actually, because we spent so much CARES Act money, their general fund allocation actually went up higher than it would have been under the budget.
Oh, interesting.
Not by a lot, but by some. So, but they did, they did lose some net revenues from their programming, when we backed out what they didn't have to spend, but what revenues they would have been. So, anyway, I'm not going to go through the rest of this right now, because we're out of time, but there's ideas on how to spend the money by fund, essentially, to your point, Councilmember Mom. And it's just a straw person, and we haven't heard back from the administration yet, their input. But please, take a look at that, and give us some feedback on the concept, and then also, some of those specific ideas, if you think those are good ideas or not, in terms of keeping them within the funds. But we'll update that going forward. And, anyway, I appreciate everyone's attention. I went longer than 30 minutes, but.
Council President.
It's been a while, we haven't reported out to people, so we're glad to be able to do that.
Yeah. Council President, what I'm wondering, on that last piece on the replenishment, if maybe we can send that to our Budget Directors inside City Council, to take a look at and make some recommendations to us? So we're not, we have enough to do on the ARPA team to look at the applications coming in, but that's sort of, you know, some accounting, and make a recommendation to us.
Sure. I am so happy to offload that onto them. You're not, oh, yeah. Yeah, you will. Okay, thanks for my surviving two council members sticking it out with me.
So this brings to close our City Council Study Session for Thursday, September 2nd. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and have a very safe Labor Day holiday. We are adjourned.